Okay, I'll call this meeting to order. Uh, roll call.
Safe one?
Here.
Taylor?
Here.
Ryder?
Here.
Recognition of employees.
I'll show that.
All right, under four, hearing of citizen concerns regarding windmill farms for McIntosh County, limited to one minute per person at a time and must be signed in on speaker request. A discussion to take possible action for moratorium requests regarding.
Can't hear back here, now we can't hear anything.
Discussion and take possible action for moratorium requests regarding windmill farms in McIntosh County. So, who would start first?
First one should be Jim Shaw.
My name is Jim Shaw, I'm representative of the life for House District thirty-two primarily Lincoln County. The majority of my campaign was standing against a project that is being represented in here today. I have one very basic question, are you all here genuinely serving the constituents that you've been elected to serve? Or are you serving private industry, one of which is a multinational corporation? It's very simple, it's that simple, and that's my question, and I leave with you and I turn it over to the rest of the people. Thank you.
Will Richter? I apologize for my story.
Hello, my name is Will Richter, uh, I've had a place over here at Ford Landing for a little over ten years. Appreciate the opportunity to speak before you this morning. I, about fifteen years ago, represented my grandmother on a wind farm about north of Erie ten miles, on a quarter section of land, and of course, she wanted to get in because she thought she was gonna get rich. And so, at that time, I didn't know anything about wind farms. But, over the last fifteen years, I've learned a whole lot about wind farms, and I wish that I had thirty minutes to talk to y'all about them. But just to sum it up, since I only have about thirty seconds left, you don't want one around this lake. They are all bad, all effects are negative, there is literally no benefit to the citizens around them. And, the money, they, what they promise you, you just don't get that much as a landowner. So, thank you for hearing me speak.
Okay, appreciate it.
Teresa Collins?
Teresa Collins?
She's here. She's here.
Good morning. I would like to return my minute to, um, Kevin Drake.
Kevin Drake here. Here he is.
I have a minute, can you add that to that? I'm already signed in.
So, you're Kevin?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, yeah, come on in.
As the young, the lady, um, expressed, I'm Kevin Drake, I can tell you, I did run for county commissioner this year. I first myself as best as I could, these three gentlemen know me, I attended multiple meetings, starting back in April. One of the things that they have the ability to do today is to vote for, to pass this memorandum, or moratorium. And in that, I propose, as everybody else would like, and it's definite, but I don't know if you'll consider that. But you can consider doing a one-year moratorium, and looking at establishing a planning committee to set guidelines of regulation, so these wind farms don't come in and just take over. And it's very easy, I also own lands in phase one of this. This is the contract that we were sent, we opted out of it, but the setback is one point two times the height of the tower. There's two things that I feel we need to address, that is, one, the setback is not enough, and two, the height requirement of the tower. And again, each of you have your county commissioner handbook, so you're clear that we can establish a planning committee. And you have the ability today to shut this down and represent every person in here. I'm gonna ask, show of hands, who's against this?
Larry Newport?
I'm here as a visiting in the Davenport Water District, and I cannot find out that that would be tower that's gonna go down in our water aquifers, or anywhere from fifty to a hundred feet. If they drill, uh, what I think they will, they're gonna go down somewhere between a hundred and fifty and two hundred feet to the base. If they do that, they're gonna go right through our aquifers, if they damage the aquifer, you're talking about thousands of people that have water. The state requirement on this, as far as distance, is a mile and a half from the school, and a hospital, and airport. Airport, I understand. If the hospital and schools are a mile and a half, give us the same privilege. It's gotta be for safety or health, one or the other. And all I'm asking, give us the same privilege, mile and a half. Right now, one's gonna be approximately a thousand feet from my son's house. That will not work.
Thank you. Thank you.
Linda?
Is it hearing?
Hearing, yes, we'll go with that.
All right, I'll focus too.
Okay.
My concern was, at what point was this, uh, option proposed to you? We're just not hearing about it. How long have you been working on this? And why has the community not had more input on the ramifications of such a thing in our community? I live out on Texan Road, and in phase three and four, it comes out that way. I have heard there's a hundred and twenty-nine out on Highway nine, but nine hundred in awe going around to, uh, McAllister. And I hear that none of this benefits Oklahoma, it only benefits Arkansas and Texas. So I'm wondering, why? Anybody in this council would even consider such a thing for us? And that's my statement.
Thank you.
Anisha Calvert?
Hi, thank you for letting us speak. Um, I have a bunch of concerns, but one of my main ones would be lifeflight. I spoke with the coordinator, Adam McAllister, for lifeflight for Airback, and he's, also a pilot. He said that it would really change how they can lifeflight. If there's, if they have a lifeflight or accident near where there's towers, those turbines, they can't bring a lifeflight in. Because, uh, explained to me was, the mag, like a magnetic force on those, on the windmills, and a turbine on a helicopter has an electrical current. Well, that magnetic force disrupts the electrical current on the copter, and the copter will crash. I've been trying to get more information, I've read where in Wisconsin, um, or, South Dakota, like a very rural, small community, no hospital. They had some medical, you know, and like the urgent care. But, due to the windmills, they had to do away with their heating cabs that were near town, and, you know, in certain areas, and they had to go fifty miles out until the heating cabs, in order to pick up injured people. So that, that put them fifty miles of transport in an ambulance when they should have been in a, in a medical helicopter headed to the nearest hospital, two hundred miles away.
Thank you.
Janet Newport?
Here. Is there any way to turn that up? We can't hear right here, we're watching out this room, we're out on the parking lot coming in, you sure can't hear.
May I have five extra seconds so I can talk slower, or do I have to, I get into my script?
Go ahead.
In my public health experience, there is no greater joy or happiness than saving someone's life. County commissioners, you can save lives today, save our lives, our homes, and the future, I believe, of the entire Lake Euphoric District in McIntosh County. Represent and protect the people you serve. You've been courted for well over a year, I understand, by clever and trained wind turbine representatives. That, the best that money can buy, they're good. Okay. Give us, your neighbors, a fair opportunity to share the other side of this massive wind turbine issue, providing you with expert research and proven outcomes, I volunteer. Ill-placed wind turbines will damage our aquifer, resulting in thousands of people and animals, forfeiting a safe water supply. Or, sorry, a safe water source. Commissioners, don't turn our beautiful land and lifestyle into a public nightmare. Protect our kids, keep these massive turbines away from our homes, God help us in a tornado. My neighbors are smart, God-fearing, voting people, with all of us working together, a healthy solution can be found. Don't sell us out, what you decide today will be each one of your legacies forever, in writing.
Mary Allen?
Mary Allen? I'm here.
She's coming.
All right, George.
Ain't gonna say a word.
I'm Mary Allen, um, I'm a seventeen-year resident of, um, McIntosh County, and, um, well, embarrass the whole of her. My point is that McIntosh County does not need the electricity generated by these turbines. It does not benefit the majority of county residents, um, it only benefits a very few, and in fact, I feel that it will ruin the best resource that McIntosh County has, which is our lake, and our tourism, and just our way of life. We have a very beautiful rural way of life, my children are very concerned for what their future looks like, and instead of wanting to stay in the state of Oklahoma as they have always wanted to do, they're questioning, where can we go live that would be like it is here now? I am also concerned for the drilling, what that will do for, um, earthquakes. How would the county respond if the drilling caused earthquakes, when they secure the bases of the wind turbines? And what would that do for our house insurances?
Dusty Allen?
My name's Dusty Allen, um, I'm also a long-term resident of this area, and also McIntosh County specifically. And I feel that we're just, by bringing this in, all we're doing is losing a resource, we're not gaining any resource. Um, we already have the beauty of our sunsets, um, the open skyline, so far as the night, so that's all being taken away from us, and the peace that those things do bring us, um, as we look out across our county right now. So every citizen in this county can benefit from that, while only a handful have benefited from the use of the wind resource. Um, that's being used for other benefits, not ours.
Janette Smith?
Good morning, everyone, Janette Smith, I'm a long-time, fourteen-year resident of this county. Uh, former superintendent of all schools, retired now, thankfully. Um, I want to strongly ditto what everybody has said today. The only two things I would ask you are, I have not seen or heard any pros for this, none, zero. And then, this should be an easy vote for you guys. I mean, you're, you are elected by these people right here in this room, and they're telling you strongly, they don't want this. Well, I don't want it. I don't want it to ruin our economy, is, the crux of our economy is tourism, and I see this as being only a negative to that among so many other things. So I would ask you, and here's what I'm wondering, why are, is this just a three-man vote? Why are not, we not putting this to the vote of the people of McIntosh County?
If y'all would, please put your phones on silent, I'm well.
Lea Todd?
She's here.
Hello, um, I have, uh, as stated by everybody else, we do not want this in our county. And I request that you all do everything within your power to stop this. If, this is way too populated in the area, um, it affects all of us, it's not just about property owners, it affects all of us as far as our water goes. I have some questions that I'm gonna give you for the record. Have, and this is for all, all of you, all three of you, have you ever attended any meeting where landowners signed NDAs for wind energy companies, where wind turbines were discussed with landowners, owners with the intent to encourage them to sign a lease? Or where you were asked not to discuss publicly that there was such a need? This other question is, will you, or any of your family members, benefit from wind energy projects in McIntosh County, including any promises of turbine mitigation credits, financial incentive, career advancements, or job offers, or progress? And then, the next question is, has there been, man, I don't have time for that.
Carl Ray?
My name's Carl Ray, I'm, I'm a resident of Chicago, I moved here about sixteen, seventeen years ago. Me and my wife on home, and, uh, I probably speak to a lot of people here. I just found out about this on Facebook and social media, you don't have to. That's a very sad thing, it, it, it gives me concern as to, as to the honesty and forthcomingness of this group coming in here, doing all this stuff. So I wanted to try to ask a couple of questions, get this on the record. When did you guys first find out about this, this project first coming into the, into the area? And, um, you know, the question I wanted to ask is, uh, after all these meetings that have been held discussing the impacts, is it your opinion that these wind turbine complexes being planned for McIntosh County will pose no possible threat to the safety and welfare of the citizens of McIntosh County? Do we have answers, or?
Levanna Hill? Levanna Hill? Levanna Hill? Levanna Hill? I've got no answer, so we'll move to Billy Hill?
There we go.
We're together. Billy Hill?
Billy Hill?
No answer for Billy Hill. Michael Taylor?
Howdy, howdy. All right, folks, how'd we get here? So, I'm gonna talk to the community here, so some of these questions that we're asking of these individuals up here, we can get. So let's start with question, the Open Records Act, and let's hold these people accountable, okay? You guys have been in talks for some time now on this project, and we're all just hearing about it. The people have spoken, if you didn't expect this, I'm sorry, but these people have spoken, the line goes all the way out the door. We do not want this, and I've heard of attorneys trying to get involved, and that we'll get sued, we're here to fight, okay? We don't want it, we want a moratorium, and this has to stop now. Stop it now! Stop it. Open Records Act.
Frank Bean?
Good morning. My name is Frank Bean, I drove up here at about four AM from Choptown, Oklahoma. I represent a hundred and thirty-three acres on the north shoreline, um, over by the cut. I'm planning to put a children's ranch over there for disabled kids. I'm gonna make this short this week, I just found out about this on Facebook when they called me. Y'all's sole responsibility is for the quality of life of McIntosh County. There's two things at issue, quality of life either voted, or quality of life for McIntosh County, or there's money involved. I would like before the next meeting, for each one of y'all that had an issue or a vote in all this, to write down in writing, anybody, in your family or friends, that will benefit from this, I want it in writing. Put it in writing, and anybody in the other phases that may benefit from this.
Yes, sir.
Michelle? Sheila?
Michelle Sheila? I'm Mark Arshambo, I have a minute, I'll give him a third.
You're who?
Mark Arshambo, A R C X.
We're not gonna start yet.
Did you sign up, sir?
Just.
Can you show where you're sitting?
Do you want me to see if there's more signatures out there on the table?
I think we should ask all your signatures. Yes, if you will check that in the break. Round it.
Greetings. My name is Michelle Shealan. My family and I moved here two years ago. Had we known this was coming, we would have bought our house. There are plenty of pretty places with no windmills and a pretty lake we could have put our money into. We chose Hannah because it's in the middle of nowhere. We did that on purpose. Two minutes isn't gonna give me enough time to tell you everything I absolutely have to tell you. I have done a lot of research, and what I will do is I will write an expose or something, and I will post it to the McIntosh No Wind Turbines McIntosh County page with all of my references, so you can all read them. I can tell you, based on my research so far, a lot of studies say it doesn't really impact land, real estate. Until you really read into it and say, it takes about seven to ten years sometimes to recoup what you've lost in the beginning. Because once a wind turbine farm has been announced in urban areas, prices can drop up to eleven percent. My husband is with me because I have PTSD. I was poisoned by doctors for six years. So many of you get sick because you're in close proximity to wind turbines. Please understand, only France, so far, recognizes wind turbine syndrome. In Fond du Lac, Wisconsin, they had to get the health department involved because people can sleep. They had to get them turned off at night. I have been gaslit for being poisoned by doctors for six years. I was misdiagnosed with lupus and bilateral Meniere's disease. Bilateral Meniere's disease, you have vertigo, migraines, vomiting, atavomic disorder. Took seven years to heal, each solid course without help. After getting off, or four years after getting off meds. I figured it out myself. It takes individuals figuring this step out. Was that one minute or two? Okay, thank you. I will write it. I will post it, and you can read it if you really want to see what I have to say.
Patty Forbes?
Patty Forbes. Forbes, Forbes. Mike Forbes. Mike Forbes.
I'm being called back. You have to let them know, ma'am. She's trying to... Okay, okay. Thank you.
What I'm gonna have to say, in all the research I've done, isn't even gonna be another minute. It's gonna be long, but I have to write to you guys. And I'll send it if you like it. But everything is going to be... I'll need a new printer. Again, the statistics that they use in our government-funded studies regarding how it impacts our property values are highly skewed to urban areas. You can't put apples and oranges, urban and rural, in the same basket. See, the statistics are the same. You can't. You can't have an event study where it's based on sales and apply that to rural areas where land has been generationally owned. You can't do that. They don't do NDA sales either in those studies. Which means if you've been sick and you had to give up your land, and there was an NDA involved, you're not gonna be represented either.
Donna Garner, right here. Hundred percent is voting. Donna Garner?
Recently moved out here from California. I'm outside with my mother-in-law. They moved here several years ago from California. And we have seen the damage that they do to the land out there in California. They have destroyed so much of the natural beauty of California. And I think you guys all have a pretty good idea what California is now. It's a piece of trash. It was a beautiful, fabulous, productive state, and now it's garbage. Do not do that to this state as well. It is, there is no good that can come to this from the people who live here. And we are also sick of seeing politicians self-serving instead of serving the people who vote for them. If I'm gonna be voted for, you do not want this here in this county. Please keep that in mind.
Mark Kraus? Mark Kraus? Mark Kraus? Kraus.
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 Let me get one over here. There you go. Good morning.
Good morning.
My name's Mark Kraus. I'm here representing about four or five other families who couldn't be here today. And we're all completely against the project. We don't see any benefit for the county or any of us, decisions this year. So vote no for me, please.
Can I have a question in mind? Yes. John Boppa?
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm sure you've had a very long weekend. I know I have. This project, you guys have a very rare opportunity. Picture in your mind, when you were growing up, whatever, your favorite movie star, your hero. Think about the adversity that they faced, whatever the plotline is. You guys get to be that hero. You get to stand up. You get to make a decision for the people that need it most. You get to stand up and tell them, a Canadian company, that you don't get to come here and affect twenty-five people in favor of lining everybody else's pockets and turning your land, your family, your heritage into a battery.
John, I'll yield my time also. Christina Miles?
You can have mine, too.
Heck yeah, let's give them to it.
I think I have mine, too.
You guys need to stand up.
But we're gonna talk, and we're gonna hold them accountable.
I have Karen Trump, her that deferred. Who else?
Christina Miles. Anytime you don't use, you can defer to him.
It's Phyllis Miller.
I'm sorry.
She's right there.
I know who you are, but...
I know, I know you do. Take care. I have Christina Miles. Marie Smart. Marie Smart.
Yes, sir. I think most people here know that none of the energy is gonna stay here. I think a lot of them get the sense that the reason that this is being done to our area of the world is because we're not as rich and well-educated across the board as the urban areas.
They think we're fools.
They think we are. But we do know the value of the land that surrounds us. We know the value of legacies before us, about the children, grandchildren, great-grandchildren that follow us. We cannot let whatever, whatever they're telling you. I don't know if it's an offer of riches in vain or whatever, or if it's some type of threat. I don't know where it comes from. I promise you, I will find out. And I want you to know that as soon as you decide to be the heroes that you are right here in your hearts, can you stand up for these people? They're gonna stand up for you. Then they can let you go to jail, and then they can let you, whatever spooky things in the background, they're not, they ain't gonna let that happen. They're usually like this, wrapped around the block. Can't walk within two blocks of this place. The companies, in their letter, that, you know, last time I saw you, they handed out this letter, in their newspaper article, they stated, "This project is years down the line," whatever, until 2027. Now, okay, cool. That makes it a very, very easy choice to be here right here. Run a moratorium for two or three years or whatever. If it's years down the road, then they should be just fine. Put a moratorium for that one. Let everybody here have some peace of mind and let them talk to you guys functionally. Let them come to the meetings, show them the materials that have been presented, and apparently are confidential or whatever. Now, don't carry the water for these clowns. Don't do it. They're in Canada. They're not here. They're not at the grocery store with you guys. Be the hero. I'll give them my time.
David Hall? David Hall? David Hall? Thank you.
As a matter of fact, I'd like to speak on this. I was in Lauton when the wind farms came down through there. And there's a lot of stuff that's not being placed and set out inside of the public for them to know. Not only did the wind companies that proceeded to go through there and through all of the west side of, west part of the state, told everybody they were gonna give jobs, they were gonna hire local, all this, that was a lie. Only one out of ten people got a job out of that for them. They brought in unions to other states. Now, this hurts our economy badly. Then, within the first year, they had twelve stampedes altogether on the ranches that were out there, and all the wild animals within the first year that are out on animal reserve out there started coming off of the reserve. They started to eat more of the predator-style animals that were coming into town through the outskirts of Lauton Town. These are bad things. When they build these, they, what they don't tell you all is, as soon as they lay the pads, they put the electrical lines in, they test the run for the big, big lines up. You start getting your nickel, your copper, your platinum, all running into the ground through there, it's bleed off. Plus, these bills also stop any type of usage, no flyover. You cannot fly, Dylan, we have a little private airport right over here off of Texas, which means they're not gonna be able to use that anymore. We have people here that have a lot of underlying conditions, a lot of heart problems and stuff. I appreciate, I apologize, but I appreciate it.
Hello, my name is Dawn Stacy. I just had one specific question. The citizens of McIntosh County asked the county commissioners for a moratorium. We were told that the DA has advised you that you cannot do this. So we would ask the DA to provide us a written legal opinion of why this advice was given. We're entitled to know on what grounds, what governing Oklahoma laws, or attorney general opinions were used to make this decision. We deserve a timely, legally accurate, written response from our DA. We respectfully ask for this to be provided to us upon requests within business days, and I would like to submit this to the permanent record of the county commissioners.
Dawn DeGrau, Hamilton?
Thank you. Mainly thank all of you all for being here today. This is what America's all about. Our government is... Our government is of us, by us, and for us. Before we find out about this green new energy thing that all we don't like, the council pointed out that it's a Canadian company. I've got a source that says that if it wasn't for the subsidies, that we wouldn't be able to do this. So now we've got a boring company being paid government subsidies, and they got those things because our government overtaxed us. That's how they have the money in France. And it gets worse. I've also got a source that says this electricity, not one, two watt hour of it is gonna go to us here in Oklahoma, that it's going to get this, Chicago. Now, what's the nickname of Chicago? City of God bless America.
Mason Bates?
In last week's meeting, Commissioner Loyal Taylor admitted at the twenty-three-minute mark that all three commissioners would be prosecuted and held personally liable if they do a moratorium. At the forty-four-minute mark, we had Commissioner Monty Greider admit that DA Stidham would be the guy who puts him in jail over a moratorium. Multiple times, you all claimed you had to do or not do whatever DA Stidham tells you to. Under Title 51 of the Oklahoma statutes, you have the Government Tort Claims Act, which protects you as an elected official from being personally prosecuted so long as there's no malicious intent. The DA, corporations, individuals can't sue you for doing the job you were elected to do. If politicians can be prosecuted and put in jail for the decisions that they make, our prisons would be full of politicians. Dog act.
Elizabeth Shealan?
Mr. Stacy?
Lou Forrest?
Lou Forrest.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Lou Forrest. We moved here three years ago from California, and what I see smells like California. There's a reason we left. You know, we left our home. I watched rogue county commissioners destroy the area I lived in with unchecked and unregulated development. Meanwhile, we were regulated to death. We, the people, have had enough. These turbines bring nothing to us in the long term. I'm also a realtor. So I'd like you to consider what this will do to your property values. Properties neighboring these turbines will have no value. And I can say that in a professional capacity. And I can say that in a professional capacity. I don't like getting up and talking in front of people, but I love this community and I love this area. You know, we left our friends and family to be here. You are our elected officials. I'd like to hear, who is in favor of the wind farms? Who's opposed? There's another hundred people outside. Many won't have an opportunity to talk. If there's further discussion on this, and we don't have an act in the moratorium today, we need to have this at a place that'll accommodate all the interested parties. It's a shame we didn't know about this until a week ago, and I wanna thank the people that put it out on Facebook, so we can be aware of.
Seth Shealan? Seth Shealan?
I think the biggest thing that, you know, you can see here is that a lot of this stuff started without a whole lot of public information. And as the public is finding out, more and more people are turning up and saying that they don't want it. I think that that is, that should be, you know, taken into consideration. Because obviously you guys, you're elected to represent these people. So if they're saying, hey, we don't want this, you know, we take them right away. Because, again, we didn't know. As we know, we're saying no. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you, next.
You need help on this? Tim? It's like, Cassit? Hassel? Tim Hassel? Cassit?
Thank you, Greg Stacy.
Cassit? First name is Tim?
Tim.
Yeah, I've got some.
Tim? Cassit? Cassit? It's gonna be an L. I please? Cassit? There's not a Tim that spoke up. What's your last name? Ryan Logan?
Lady Taylor Logan? I just wanna say, uh, I'm Brian Logan. I'm from Oklahota County this morning. First and foremost, this is a beautiful area. McIntosh County is beautiful, and I wanted them to know that I am a ear to listen. I wanted to be here to listen to the people of McIntosh County. Thanks, and I'll yield my time the next time. Running for State Senate in two thousand twenty-five, primaries will be March fourth.
Sky King? Sky King? Sky King? Sky King? I cannot read this next name at all. And it looks like the last name might be Ward. Maybe it starts with an O. Wade?
Last name Ward?
Ward or Wade? First name starts with an O? Paula Bennett?
My name is Paula Bennett, and, um, I'm a little shaky, so if I had to up here to do this, don't place anything better. Anyway, um, I'm a former corn engineer's park ranger, and I worked at Lake Uphaula for about a year. And this is one of the most beautiful places that Oklahoma has. And this is a land grab. If you don't think that the Green New Deal is not a hoax, y'all need to start reading because it's not gonna affect us necessarily right now. The people, your children, your grandchildren, and your great-grandchildren are all gonna suffer. This thing goes for ten miles. Think about that, ten miles from each one of these things. It has health effects, it affects your animals, and it affects the property values. I could go on and on, but we're fighting for our kids, our grandkids. Please think about this before you do anything. This is our babies that we're working for right now, not us.
Dorn Weaver the second? Dorn Weaver the second?
I'm Dorn Weaver. I'm from Lincoln County. Um, we have a place over here at Lake Uphaula, have it for twenty years now. We have this invasion, this trickery going on in Lincoln County at this time, and I thought maybe I might be able to get out from underneath it, come out here and retire. It doesn't seem that's gonna be the case, so I'm gonna be here helping these people fight this off. I don't think y'all realize how many people, I work at Tinker, Edward Space, and there's a lot of people that are saving up there for their retirement, saving up to build and construct their retirement homes here on this beautiful lake. I think if y'all wanna, this is a community of people that live here, but there's a lot of outsiders that wanna come here and find, what kind of economy are you gonna create where you don't have anybody spending five hundred dollars a week in on fuel or at your restaurants, and you're, you're changing the outcome of what might be happening here for the future of this town, which is a lake community? And once you bring this in, you can't get it back. That's all I have to say about that. Appreciate it.
Matt Coaday?
I, you gotta close. We've been, we've been pronouncing our last name for a long time. It's Matt Cody. Uh, my name's Matt Cody. I'm the president and founder of the Oil and Gas Workers Association. Uh, how many of you here work in oil and gas? How many people love Oklahoma oil and gas? Um, and I wanna mention, so, uh, I see a lot of veterans in this crowd, uh, got to shake one of his hand earlier. Next Monday is Veterans Day. We appreciate you every day. Please, for the honor of speaking for your court, um, I understand that you're in a very difficult position. Uh, the lady who spoke about the Green New hoax, it, it's absolutely true. Um, I know that this Canadian-owned company and several other Canadian-owned companies, um, actually have a track record of selling out to China. In fact, right now, AES Corporation is in talks with the government of China to sell a minority state. Now, Governor Stid, I believe it was, uh, October twenty-twenty-three, or October twenty-twenty-two, mentioned that, hey, we've got a problem with China taking over Oklahoma, and if you're willing to sell out this county and the rest of Oklahoma to China, go ahead and approve this project and tell these veterans that their service to this country doesn't matter. God bless you, God bless America.
Jim Thomas? Mike E. Don?
I see him standing right up.
Well, I'm a part of Colorado.
He's outside.
I think he, I think he just said he healed this man.
I'm just gonna give that message to whoever wants it.
Oh, y'all.
Attorney, wherever he's at.
You done do it? All right. Uh, I, uh, there's plenty of stuff to talk about here. Uh, I would say of main concern is that this is stage one, and they keep saying, we're here to be community players, we're here, we're gonna do this, and all this jazz. They haven't given us. Uh, this is the first, anybody here is hearing about it, and I can't remember the last time somebody did anything in secret that benefited me. So, i- i- if you feel the, the crowd kind of ambling up at you, that's why, because they just heard about this. Let me just tell you, it's, it's like losing somebody close to you. You go through the stages of grief, only this one is basically anger, 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 and anger. So, uh, and I mean, for good reason, because there, there, a lot of what is happening to them is benefiting twenty-five people. There's twenty-five people standing on that wall. Uh, I, I mean, they are, their property values, they know are gonna be attracted from. Their poverty life is gonna go away. These things are seven hundred twenty foot tall, like sixty feet shorter than the Devon Tower, and there's a hundred and twenty of them.
Michelle Kendrick?
Good morning. My name is Michelle Kendrick. I have thirty years of family history on the Caucasian side, and, um, ancestors with Choctaw, Cherokee, and Chickasaw. There's been a thirty-year study in Portugal that is about vibroacoustic disease, and is caused by the turbines of these windmills. It is irreversible unless people move away from them. It affects children first. It actually changes the way the cognitive functioning of the brain works, even to the point of suppressing breathing. You first see listlessness in children. They don't do well at school. Everybody's tired. Nobody's getting any rest. Wonderful years of exposure, mood swings, indigestion, heartburn, repeated mouth and throat infections, and lungitis. Um, Ricky Ben Doyle and Dusty Cross from the Grace Bible Church have given me that time that's acceptable to you.
Dusty Cross and who else?
Ricky Ben Doyle? Ricky Ben Doyle, B-E-N-G-O-A-H-Y-L-L.
It's Ricky Ben Doyle. It's not, it's an N, sorry.
So you got two names.
Thank you very much. Okay. When, when the children and the, and the people are gonna be experiencing these symptoms, they're gonna go to a doctor and they're gonna be given antibiotics because that's what it's gonna present as. And again, this is based on a thirty-year study. I will be very happy to share that whole video information with you at any time. You have the power to help humans not be sick, you know? Sixty to seventy percent of the energy that is made here in Oklahoma is sold to other states. It does not seem to me it's needed to benefit the Oklahomans. And to put their health at risk, I know, I can talk about the environment. I can talk about how Native Americans choose everything they do to be for the benefit of the next seven generations. And I am for the sustainability of our country. But we cannot put these near humans, water, or wildlife. We cannot. We can put them somewhere where it's not gonna harm anyone, and we can also use sustainable materials. So, the second stage of this, four to ten years of, of exposure, chest pain, back pain, fatigue, fungal and viral skin infections, allergies, blood and urine, inflammation of stomach lining. People die from this, and the drugs that they will be given to treat them will not help. Severe after ten years of experience, psychiatric disturbances, headaches, hemorrhages of nasal and digestive mucosa, duodendral ulcers, spastic colitis, varicose veins and hemorrhoids, decreased vision, severe joint pain, cerebral muscular pain, neurological disturbances, and death with the livestock and the animals. We're seeing that after less than a year, horses are born with genetic, um, abnormalities, right? So, within their hooves. And when skin tissue was tested, it is only found in this vibratory acoustic disease. Cattle are losing their babies, they're aborting their babies, or your farmers, your horses, your dogs, all of your animals, as well as your children. And studies have not been done on wildlife, but if it's affecting them, it's going to affect everything. So I ask you, please, for, for the people in your community, you have the chance to, to vote this down right now, today, and end it. My father retired as the special assistant to the Department of the Interior. He spent his life in government, and I learned from him. He was an excellent negotiator. He would speak to the people that wanted something done. He would speak to the humans. I have one more minute, right?
That was two. I'm sorry.
I have mine, and then two more? That would be three?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
Betty Morrison? Betty Morrison?
Uh, have there been any type of agreements made between McIntosh County and any wind energy companies or contractors for wind energy companies? I just wanted to bet on the record. Uh, these are in Oklahoma counties. Uh, the way they're set up, from the way they're set up to who they hire, they take proactive steps to limit their liabilities. They're protecting their interests. I won't be party to those leases. Nobody is representing my interest in those contracts. That's your job. Because I'm not protected, it's your job to protect us and, and to represent our interests because the consequences overflow. So it is your job to protect us.
Laila Medley?
Hello, my name is Laila Medley. Um, I'm actually finishing Bria Todd's questions, and that's what Betty was doing as well. Um, she wants to know, are you aware of any other energy companies that possibly have plans to come into McIntosh County, including solar, hydrogen, carbon capture, or any other wind energy company? So in just a minute, I will give this to you so it can become a permanent record. It has all of her questions that she would like answered. Um, also, you know, you guys have an opportunity. You can do the right things. You can do what the people want, or the people will do what things. You can do what the people want, or the people will do what they need to do. It's just that...
Thomas Potey? Potey? Thomas Potey?
Thomas Potey.
He did sign up this week. That's my husband. He just signed up on the, maybe it was wrong. She, okay. I'm sorry, that was...
Jeremy Owen?
Thomas is ready to come in.
What?
You surprised me. I'm sorry.
Good morning. I just want to say, we retired here two years ago, moved into a beautiful valley west of here, and this thing to my stomach. And this needs to be stopped. Okay, thank you, sir.
Jeremy Owen?
Jeremy?
Jeremy Owen.
He's coming.
I'm just yielding my time. Jeremy's really a burning.
Your people continue to bring up good points, and I'm very, very proud of them for that. Takes a lot of courage to get, number one, to get somewhere on a Monday morning without catastrophe happening. You guys keep up the good work. With the number of people that are sitting here today, and maybe some of you yourselves, will have a child that is autistic, or are predisposed to certain of these effects that I shared a thing that my children, or, or anybody's children would have to go through, especially compounded by things like shadow flicker. Why, it has migraines. I'm sure some of you guys have migraines. Shadow flicker is going to make that real bad. It's going to make autistic kids have seizures, probably. Other, other people that have seizures have seizures. Wind reverberation. At some point, you're going to have to answer if you don't take care of this.
Aaron Smith?
I yield my time to the next speaker.
My name's Mandy Harris. Are you one here? I am not. You just gave me his time. Way to go, Mandy. All right. So, oh, sorry. I just found out about this on Facebook, like a lot of people. I've got three, four generations down there in Opa-oh, and I'd be naive to think it's not going to affect us too. You see a lot of people mad. You hope mama bears, because you're messing with our kids. And I don't know a lot of things, but I can look across here, and I can see who thinks they're going to benefit from this, because they look down when somebody puts forward an impassioned plea for our land and our kids and our generations. The chance for my grandkids to grow up safely, in the same spot where my grandpa and my dad and my great-grandpa are buried, there is no amount of money that any of y'all can get that can make up for that. And for everyone, I mean, there's thousands that haven't heard. There are thousands of people who had to take care of their kids and go to work and do all the things.
Bernita Hyler? Bernita.
I like the shirt. Full disclosure, this lady is employed by me.
I voted you in. Took a chance on you. And you took an oath. And I believe that you can get us monitoring. Everyone, you can get in a contract. When you speak with those voters, you say, Mr. Stitt is your boss. No, he's not even my boss. So you took an oath as to watch our water, do our roads. I expect you to do it. Secondly is, if you're compromised in any way whatsoever, come to me. We, the people, will come after you. And one last thing, would you please grade Wind Mall Road, the winner? I'm tired of driving down the washboard. Okay? That's all I am.
You're not going to get stuck there. We will. I bought a new trailer, but it's good for you.
Mike Hyler?
Do what? Yield it its time to someone.
Oh, okay.
Mike Hyler?
I'll play this song.
Hey, what's your name? Are you one here?
No.
Okay. Go ahead.
Appreciate everybody that's come out today and you guys for listening. The only thing I want to add to what's been said, no one's addressed the fact that these things are also a hazard, a health hazard in the sense of disposal, not just while they're in function, but they also have a short lifespan. They are nothing, no parts that can be recycled. The batteries are dangerous. The waste disposal could possibly go in trouble. Thank you.
Karen Hatch? Karen Hatch? Karen Hatch? Karen Hatch was no answer, and Lori Farmer's next, and she said that she's different to Mr. Bob.
Dean's next. Dean?
Yes, sir.
Just going down a little.
Okay. Harley Watkins?
Hello. Thank you. And Harley Watkins, I moved here almost three years ago, for many reasons that people have already said that they moved here. I don't want, I'm from California. I don't want this to become California. And I know Mr. Bob has said, that's what he's got me to plan. I'm concerned that our representatives have been doing this. We didn't know about it. So my first question, what research have you done on land, water, and health impacts of wind turbines? And I know you can't answer me that. But I would like to get that in writing. What have you, what research have you done to understand what's happening? What videos have you watched? What people have you talked to? Tell us where you got your research, and why you think we can't, never mind, forget that, somebody else covered that. I also want you to know that I talk to many people in our community, and there are many people that aren't here because they have difficulty. So there are more people that should be out there. Thank you.
Young Stacy? Senior?
Y'all give us three minutes at the first meeting. I'll take three. I'll just not be rude. But I got a question. I got a letter, and I'm asking you three men to sign. It says, do you or will your family members receive any economic or other benefits, whether from leases or other promised gain, either in Oklahoma, outside the state, or in Canada or elsewhere? Would you sign this statement that you will not? This is Republican, I mean, any time, whatever they choose to. I don't have any direction of that, but I'm too.
Can you give us the names of who does not sign it, please?
Mr. Brown is the only one that said he would sign it, but he said he was going on the record saying it. He did not. So just going to submit this for the record. McLeary's not in office yet, so he don't have a vote. I know where he stands, but he had a vote. Thank you, guys. Thank you, God Almighty, for allowing us to have this meeting. And thank you, guys, for letting us come. And we're here today, this is our third week. We presented y'all with a, with the dangers of the wind turbines. Two of you came to the church and had seen the video and watched. Tim Turner was there. He's seen some of it. And so we're, I'm not going to go over the dangers, because we already know the dangers. We've asked you to do your job. It's your duty. It's your duty to protect the health, our property, our businesses. We served you with a letter of liability, or give you a letter of liability, and ask for a moratorium of three to five years on commercial solar, wind, and the carbon or the green hydrogen that's popping up. And we don't want these things. Each of these things are a danger in their own way. I'm going to tell you something that nobody knows. Each one of these towers has a 360 degree angle camera at the top of them with audio and video. I'll go to yield. I don't want to read.
I'll yield my time.
I'm not trying to break the rules. Don't even turn it.
Your time's loaded up. Everybody else?
I'll yield my time.
You yield a minute. Everybody gets their time.
These towers go up and then are surround the lake. They started dusting and go all the way up around Uphaula, or, or Stidham, Lenham. They go to Shokoda, Council Hill. They go to Stigler, back down around to McAllister. This is bigger than any of us thought. It's not the 121 turbines. It's 900 plus. You think there's a lot of people here today? When we posted this thing on Facebook, it's one person posted. Today, two weeks later, we are in a thousand people. We will show up at the polls. We voted y'all in. We expect you to do your job. In 1776, some 56 men stood against the largest military mind at that time to form this beautiful nation. They pledged their lives and their fortunes to form this great nation. We're not asking you to pledge your life or your fortune, but we are asking you to stand up and fight for us, not do the opposite, and sell our lives and our fortunes to some foreign one. And I mean foreign one, the China Blades, German company out of, with the German company in Hughes County, Canadian company here in Uphaula. It's not right.
Gary Grace?
I'm from California, and I live next to Windmills. And the blades fly off because the breaks big. And they destroy everything around and then fires start. And they were built right next to a major highway, major highway, and we would have to shut, the highway would have to be shut down. And so they got fires out, got the blades collected, and then where they continue to stay. And also, these windmills don't make any money, because celebrities, people that make a lot of money confess to them, because they're a loss. They ride it off. So that's my experience. So you want to, you want to be careful. Thank you.
Joe Campbell?
Joe Campbell. Joe Campbell.
Joe Campbell?
Gentlemen, good morning. I graduated high school here in 1986, went to army, spent 22 years. I fought in two wars. Appreciate it, sir. I'm here to volunteer to support you in dealing with this large infrastructure project. Well, I'm against it. Being a long time Lake Uphaul resident, I'm against it. But I'm here to support you in fighting this project. And I don't know where it's coming from. I don't know who the plan is. I'm not sure if you know. It's not transalta. It is someone paying transalta to do these type projects. So you need help? I will volunteer my time, sit on committee. I have written a statement for questions for the commission. I'd like to submit that for the record. And I have copies of that for the board. Thank you.
Eileen? Ella?
I family and I have owned a lakefront home on Lake Uphaula for over 30 years. My family and I have owned a lakefront home on Lake Uphaula for over 30 years. I am here today to express my opinion that this project should be canceled or put on a moratorium due to the fact that we are just now learning that the wind turbine projects have five phases, and that some of these phases will be on the hillside and mountains of Lake Uphaula. My understanding is that some of the turbines will be close to my home. These turbines will be seen and possibly heard from homeowners like myself, along with those swimming at the beaches or boating on the water. This will detract from the beauty of our lake and could decrease the tourism to the lake. I feel the lake area is too populated to have this large of a turbine wind farm surrounding it. If a turbine explodes, catches on fire, or is hit by a tornado, tornado sending debris flying from us, members of the lake community will be in danger of harm or death. members of the lake community will be in danger of harm or death. Our homes are also in danger of damage or destruction by these gigantic structures. For these reasons, I thought you must deny this project, or at least place a moratorium on it. Thank you for your time.
Good Will?
I can give my hunch, Jamie Cole.
Jamie Cole?
Is that right, Jamie?
Yes.
Are you one?
No. Um, my name's Jamie Cole, I'm a, my parents retired here about twelve, almost twenty years ago. I'm dad's from Fourmore area, my grandfather used to haul for the dairy, because that was the valley down here before the lake was ever born. Uh, so I'm, I've been here several years. I have some questions about what the, what the cause and effects of the infrastructure's gonna be. As far as what's gonna happen to the roads. Some of these places have a coal worth for a bridge. I've been around these trucks before, I've been out in, you know, western Oklahoma, seen them. I've got an uncle that hauls for them up in Iowa and places like that. These roads won't handle that. Who's gonna pay for that? Who's gonna be affected by that? The, you know, it's not just one truck at a time, there'll be three, eight trucks stacked up at a time. That's gonna limit the travel between, uh, it's gonna limit the travel to the area. Yeah, appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
Kelly Blart?
Kelly Blart?
Kelly Blart? She had to go to work.
You would?
She had to go to work.
Oh, okay, she had to go to work.
Peter Todd?
I'm Peter Todd. I have an eighty-three-year-old grandmother. My family's been on my land for over a hundred years. Okay, I'm sorry.
You're fine.
Okay, my family's been on this land, my land for over a hundred years. It just, it's the saddest thing that's probably ever happened to me. We passed this land down, family to family to family, and it just makes it so sad to think that this is what's going to happen to it. Will I have anything at all to leave my children, my grandchildren? So, and then I echo what Candy said earlier. It's on top of all of the negative things that we've heard today. There have been so many negative, I haven't heard any positive yet. And I, I would like to make one complaint. This meeting should have been better known. It should have been in a bigger place where more people who wanted to say something could get in. And Monday morning on a work day, how about an evening meeting? For people who have genuine concerns, they can come and say what they feel. Thank you.
Billy Miller?
He had to go to work, but we wanted to give our hand to him.
Mr. Stacy?
All I'm asking is, you know, I was.
I'm sorry, are you Billy Miller?
No, I'm.
No, he's my husband, he had to go to work.
Oh, okay. He was stepping up, I was gonna see.
No, I thought she had.
You didn't say Mr. Stacy, no, right now?
Yes.
I'll take that minute, but not right now.
Danielle Burksfield? Danielle?
Burksfield?
Rick Pod?
Rick?
Rick Pod.
Rick?
Okay, so Mr. Walker, a while ago when he worked in, he also killed the community for a minute, so. Yes, thank you. I've been asked to go on the record and discuss a little bit about the PCBs, the forever chemicals. I don't know how to pronounce it, Rob, and the real name, but these things are extremely, extremely, extremely dangerous. They are like they sound. Uh, it's the coating on the blades. It's called Teflon, I think. You guys have a gigantic source of water. You need to protect it, of course, because it's water. You can't do anything necessary to life without clean water that doesn't poison you. From what I understand, like a few grains of actual PCBs in the size of an Olympic swim pool is over EK regulations. I have seen with my own eyes in at least two different contracts that the company has laid in liability for damage due to PCBs. Also, uh, the, the damages to your roads are gonna be significant, because they sense they're seven hundred and twenty feet tall. Therefore, the cranes have to be gigantic in order to build something like that. As you can imagine, therefore, they weigh more, therefore, they will screw your roads up a lot more. Uh, do not trust these guys, do not, do not trust Canadians, they're never gonna be here, ever. Not ever are they gonna be here. And I'm gonna give my time, this stuff I hear, because I don't remember exactly what you want to say.
I just wanted to go on the record, I know when they, they just want to discuss this and, and consider it. Can you give the people a timeframe when you're gonna have your decision, if not today? Thank you.
Chala Biggett?
Hello, I'm Chala Biggett, I've lived in MacIntosh County for nineteen years now. At the last meeting, you said you had communication with TransAlta in April of twenty twenty-three. And you sat on this information for at least a year and a half, and probably since twenty twenty-two. Yet you failed to mention it to the citizens of MacIntosh County whom you work for. I'm not going to list reasons of why I don't want wind turbines here or the health risks associated with them, because I know you don't care. Nor will I comment on your inconsideration of our farmers, ranchers, and neighbors who will have their worlds turned upside down. Instead, I'm going to address the fact that your lack of transparency with the citizens of MacIntosh County is disappointing, to say the least. You have failed to look out for the best interest of its citizens and have betrayed their trust with your silence about this huge project that will affect everyone. We know as well as you do that you have full power to exercise your elected position to put a moratorium of three to five years on this wind project. During that time, we had hoped the citizens could decide on how to move forward with it, but again, you don't care what we think or how we feel. I'm appalled by the fact a foreign company can walk right in and take over our rural communities all across the state without us ever being notified. Oklahoma legislature has failed to protect our rural communities, and now you've done the same. The only thing fueling this green energy agenda is greed, and those that benefit with padded pockets, while the rest of us are left to suffer the consequences of the choices, your choices. Today, you can choose to do what's best for our community and its citizens. And Bobby, at the first meeting, you said you never met anyone against the wind turbines. But if you made a public and let everybody know, then you would have found out right away that many of us are opposed to them.
Jeremy Holmes? Jeremy Holmes?
All right, I'm Jeremy Holmes for all the, I don't know, we, um, I just got a few questions for you guys. How much of tax revenue do you guys think you're gonna get? You guys said at the last meeting that you guys didn't want to be into a, um, court battles with more importance, which is, you guys have not read the contract, apparently. You guys are gonna be in court battles over the property taxes? It states clearly in the, um, in the lease that the property owner has to fight for the right, for their property tax, taxes increases every time, because they cannot have the increases on it. It says so by the landlords, or by the leases, excuse me. Um, so you guys are being a fight there. If my property tax, if my property value goes down, as you clearly stated, Bobby, that they have went there, that they will go down if we have the towers, um, don't you think that there will be a battle for our property taxes to go down as well, if our assessed value goes down? Only makes sense. It only makes sense there. Thank you, guys, for your time.
Joseph Smith Hanski?
Here. All right, so as you know, Lake Uphaula attracts more than two million visitors annually, approximately thirty-two million contributions, uh, US dollars to the local economy. But that's all about to change, if this isn't stopped. Unless they're stopped, TransAlta will build hundreds of the tallest turbines in the United States of America. Uh, even taller than any in the western hemisphere. Right here at Lake Uphaula. These structures will be taller than the tallest skyscrapers in Tulsa, Fort Worth, Kansas City, St. Louis, Denver, Phoenix, Portland, San Diego, Memphis, Nashville, Baltimore, Cincinnati, and Washington DC. Same with you. Phase one includes a hundred and twenty-one turbines, and I can't find another place on planet Earth that has this many seven hundred and twenty feet tall structures. I can't find it anywhere in the world. And that's only phase one. There would be hundreds more, nine hundred total, built around Lake Uphaula. It will effectively turn the state's largest lake into an industrial complex and collapse the local economy.
Lou Martin?
I guess that's me. I don't see, it's the last film and then talk. Wanna add to it, you want my time?
I'll yield the tip. From you.
Stacy Woods?
I just wanna say that I grew up in this city. I spent most of my weekends here at the lake with beauty. I'm, I'm example of generations of people. I bring my kids here, and I bring kids here. But still, beauty is what it has to offer. My husband spent thirty years in the military fighting for America. Every one of you have a due diligence to stand up, speak for the people, and fight for your city, for your lake, for your land. You're sitting on a golden nugget. Don't sell yourself short. Why do you think they want this land?
Tracy Woods?
That was my wife. Just like she said, we grew up in Oklahoma City. And our whole lives, we've been to the lake on weekends, for July, go to rodeo, and enjoy this place, and go fishing, it's a great fishing lake. And then, uh, then we bought a place out here in two thousand, uh, seventeen, and, uh, we love it. We're right on the water, and we come here all the time. And as a matter of fact, I didn't even know this was, this meeting was going down until a day or two days ago. It's like, of course, you know, uh, I don't always know everything, but, um, I think the word didn't get out very well, uh, because we're here all the time. And, uh, we love it, and just like the gentleman right over here said, I agree with him, and I agree with this guy right here. Letting, letting a foreign company come in here and destroy this habitat that we all love, great fishing lake, and, uh, it's just a travesty. And I think y'all need to reconsider.
Thanks, sir.
Harry Sennett?
I'm here to lay, just be on the high, I have a situation. I've been a resident here for greater than twenty years. Um, I have had family burn here from many generations. And one thing is, is, uh, actually, everybody that knows me knows that I, I came here from Texas, and I, I do love Texas, but I have grown to love this community, it's grown on me. And I want to convey the fact of what I think this will do, how detrimental it'll be to this community. Um, property values alone will plummet. Um, there's no, when you start looking at the statistics and the data, a hundred percent is gonna affect the property values here in this community. Um, I have a property for sale right now, and the person doesn't want to do anything but do to this right here. So that is an actual, um, factual thing that happened. Um, I just urge you to search your hearts, and, and like God, let you on this decision first.
Thank you.
Emily Patterson? Emily?
Patterson?
Emily Patterson?
Patterson.
Emily, you prefer to.
Sorry, I'm sorry. One other thing I'd like to bring to tie, um, I used to be the director of nurses.
Good job, please. You're a little quiet. Thank you.
And I used to be the director of nurse at the hospital up here. Um, and one thing I do wanna urge you to think about as well is, um, one thing that's always been a problem is helicopter flights out here in here, to be able to save the people that are needing that medical care in an emergency situation. Absolutely, these will affect the flight patterns in and out of here. Now, the ones coming up, maybe not as much, and then they need to get a clearance on that, yes. But the ones coming in, that will not be the case. And I assure you, I've known many pilots that I've talked to, this will affect the, your, your family, my family, everybody's family, getting medical care in and out, even from McAllister to Tulsa. It's gonna affect the care that's taking, that urgency, and it is not sensitive in those emergencies. So please think and consider that as well.
Gail Jackson?
Okay, I've been listening, and I really thought somebody bring this up. This is Long Region, we talked about the predator chemicals. And I feel of this, because I just paved across the state park and so I'm just eating. When you're looking at it, at Arkansas, this is navigation channel. If you let these chemicals go into our lake, and they kill our fish, they're gonna go on down, because what's next, that fish gonna eat one? And you're looking, I just came across the Dardanel Lake, and there's a huge new there. But, um, what I'm saying is, you're far region, and I would do the research now on Arkansas, what it's gonna do to the agricultural. what it's going to do to the agricultural lands because the PFS leaches into the soil. And you've got a huge amount of, uh, chemicals that can affect your future eating. And if you want your grandkids, your kids, and everybody else eating those things, you go right ahead and do this, but I want to encourage you to think again about all the way to the Mississippi on what's happening here.
Yeah. And I have two people that have worked with this lake.
Mr. Stacy.
Thank you, everybody.
There he is.
Big man. Yeah, I'm good. Guys, I told you when I came here, I didn't come here to fight. I come here to tell people about Jesus. But again, it's our duty to stand up for what is right. Lots of people bled and died to give us this right, let's not throw it away. We are asking you to stand your ground. I believe you can be just like the man that founded this country. I am sorry. I'm asking you right now, are you going to give us a moratorium? I'm asking. We don't, we don't have days. We have till the ninth.
Right.
You're afraid of being sued. How many in here are willing to sue the county? You're going to be in court anyway. We want an answer today or we're going to file today. Are we going to get an answer? I'm asking. Today, you're going to give us a moratorium today?
I'll give you the answer.
Okay. I, 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 seriously, guys, I'm not, I'm not trying to put anybody in the spotlight, but we don't want these things. They're deadly. Our aquifer gets chelk, it gets sixty-foot deep. They're going to, they're going to dig down into the ground a hundred-and-fifty to two-hundred feet. They're going to punch through our aquifer. That concrete alone is going to acidify our water. You lose the water, you lose the American farmer, you lose the American farmer, guess what you lose? You lose America. The American farmer feeds eighty-five percent of this country, or eighty-five percent of the beef comes from the small farmers such as me and a lot of these guys in here. This is not just a Euphala thing, this is an America thing. We cannot allow a foreign company to come in here and overrule us. You cannot be afraid of a foreign company. This country was not built on cowards, and it will not stand with cowards in charge. Let's stand our ground. What's the answer going to be? Are we getting a moratorium today?
Alright. We have talked to our legal counsel. But to start off, I would like to thank everyone here for their information and the research they have done. And we have heard so much about these wind farms, we appreciate that. I want to keep hearing, you know, what y'all find out, what you hear, uh, because we are here for you, but, you know, the commissioners have had a meeting with our legal counsel, ADA Mr. Grexton. We've discussed, I better get up here so all of you can hear. We have discussed issues brought before us. We have been informed and advised that we have no authority or jurisdiction over private landowners, private landowners and what they do with their own personal property. We cannot, we cannot tell you what you can or can't do with your land. Let me finish, please. We can only oversee county roadways, buildings, or county property. We are neither for or against this issue. We're not going to do that. We would advise you to do what you discussed at the meeting at the church at Hannah, and pull your money together and hire a good environmental lawyer. Because we cannot do, we cannot do a moratorium. We know this is not what some wanted to hear, but we just don't have the authority over private property. I know you're going to be mad at us, and, but we truly sympathize with your issue. And I have the same thing going on at Council Hill. We've got wind, and we have solar coming in, and it's going to be a mile from our house. And, uh, I, I, I truly understand what you're, you know, going through. Uh, but we will do all we can to be sure that the roads are not damaged by their heavy equipment. And this is as far as we can go on this matter. Again, we are sorry, and we can't legally do more at this moment. If y'all find out anything legally, just like legally that we can do, if you will email me, let me know, I can bring it up in meetings and discuss it with the other commissioners in our ADA. And, uh, but this is the best that we can do. We, we thank you so much for your concern and your information and for being here and taking your time off work. I hate to be the one, I know I'm the commissioner here at District Three, and I, I hate to be the one to, to bring this up, but, uh, you know, it's, it's my job and I have to be the chairman and do this, so, yes, sir. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, Mr. Grexton is going to speak.
Uh, I've, I've sat here and, and listened to everything you all have said. Um, I don't disagree with most of the comments, except when you call your public officials crooks. Um, I've worked for this county for forty-two years. I was elected DA in nineteen eighty-three, and I've served ever since then. My family came to this county in eighteen twenty-three. My family has been farmers and ranchers in this county since nineteen ten. I own land in the middle of the Fisher Ranch, and I'm part of a working ranch in Eastern Macintosh County. I have as much invested in this as anybody sitting in this room. Anybody hold up their hand and say they have more? I want to see it. Okay? No, you don't.
Sir, I am for your life.
Really?
As, as, as do I, as do I. Now, the point is, all of that aside, I don't like this either, okay? I don't want them in my county, I don't want them on my ranch, I don't want them anywhere near us. What I'm required to do by my job, though, is tell these men to follow the law, okay? So you can be mad at me, you can even be mad at them, that's okay. I understand everybody's anger.
So Hughes County didn't follow the law?
Ma'am?
Hughes County didn't follow the law?
I'm sorry?
Because they did a moratorium, their county.
That's what I was going to ask.
Okay, if, if y'all let me finish what I have to say, then I'll even take those questions. In my opinion, that moratorium is illegal and unenforceable. I have spoken with the heads of civil, uh, departments in various DA's offices. They agree with me. You should speak with the folks in Craig County if you disagree. They were on the news the other night. And their county, uh, moratorium, they, they didn't declare a moratorium, and it was of no effect. I'm on the same side you're on, okay? But there are many other organizations you should be talking to. You should be contacting the EPA, you should be contacting the Oklahoma Water Resources Board, you should be contacting Department of Environmental Quality. You should probably even be con, uh, contacting the FAA as to how these things affect flyovers.
Why aren't you guys here?
Yeah!
No, it's not what I'm saying. I made to represent the county of, of Macintosh and the Oklahoma.
Who is the county of Macintosh County? We are.
Sir, I, I don't have any jurisdiction to do this, okay? And the commissioners, the commissioners, I'm sorry, sir, did you have something to say?
I said it doesn't stop any other DA.
Tell me another DA that's done something about this that's benefited the people.
I've sent you an article from USA Today with counties all across the United States. Oh, you give me an email and I'll...
It, it doesn't matter what counties and other states do.
It does, ma'am.
In Oklahoma.
But who is the county like I have?
In Ok, in Oklahoma, the Board of Commissioners, I'll answer your question in a minute, sir. In Oklahoma, the Board of County Commissioners has no authority over private property. Has no authority over private property. It's the same thing that happened up in Mays County a few years ago when chicken barns overran five-hundred-thousand-dollar houses. And they were told the same thing, the Board of Commissioners has no authority. They got the DEQ involved, they got the EPA involved, and the Oklahoma Water Resources Board involved, and they got some things done. The other thing you all can do is you can start a petition as they did in Craig County for zoning, which allows you all to restrict these things. Okay? Ma'am?
Yes, what can you do? If you say you can't put a moratorium on it, you said you had control over the road, can you not put a moratorium on the road? What is it that you can do in order to, to stop this from happening? You say what you can't do, but I want to know what you could, you can do.
And, and what I'm telling you is there's very little we can do. We are not the body that controls private property, okay? We can, we can, we can, we can... Listen, I, I listen all, I listen all of you all. I, I, I took it when you all want to say bad things about me, and I still am a public official, that's fine. But I'm going to have my turn too, okay? So your question was, what can we do? Now, I'm trying to answer your question. The Board of Commissioners has very little that it is empowered to do. It has control over the roadways. It can make agreements with these companies as to the damages that are done to the roadways so there's money to repair those roadways. But as to what happens on private property, they have no more control over it than the governor does. Nobody controls private property unless it is zoned in such a fashion.
Where do they get their...
That's why you contact the Environmental Protection Agency and agencies like that. That's not the Board of Commissioners.
Why are y'all, why are y'all, why are you here? And you need to do something now. What's your point?
The commissioners, the commissioners are responsible for maintaining public properties, roadways, courthouse, integrity of things that are owned by the county. They have no authority over private property, ma'am.
Read the handbook, their job is to protect the health, welfare, and the property of its citizens. It's in their handbook. If they don't protect our health, they're carrying the duty that can be removed, including the ADA.
Well, no, first of all, I can't be removed by anybody but my boss, okay?
We can, we can elect you.
No, you can't elect me because I'm not elected. Every, everybody else is, and, and...
All I'm saying, sir...
And, and I don't, and I don't appreciate threats, sir. I, I, you are, I'm just trying to do my job. And y'all just don't, no, you just don't want to hear that we don't have the authority to do it, that's all. And so, I'm, if they want to pass a moratorium, I'm not their bosses, okay? I tell them what I believe their legal obligations and authorities are. If they want to vote to have a moratorium, they can vote to have a moratorium. I've told them it's not enforceable, I believe it's not enforceable. If anybody wants to get an opinion from the Attorney General of the State of Oklahoma that says it's enforceable, by all means, they can have one. I welcome the Attorney General giving us an opinion in that effect.
Well, the AG just shut down one of these projects down in the Pines River.
Do what?
The AG and the tribes just shut down one of these type of projects.
The tribes have all sorts of powers we don't have.
Yeah.
And that's, that is another part of them. Well? The Board of Commissioners only has the power that are given to them by the Constitution.
And you are the top administrative body in the county. You are the top administrative body in the county. You three equal. You are the top administrative bodies in the county. Tim, is that accurate? Does it say it? Did you read that in your paper?
I was told that a special assistant to the Department of Interior that the county was the only one who had the authority to stop this. A special assistant to the Department of the Interior who worked in the government for over thirty years. He said the county, that's what I'm asking, I, I don't know, this is not my expertise. It, I'm hearing that as humans, as individuals, as members of this community, you don't want this. And your seats that you occupy are limited legally. So we would appreciate as citizens any help you can offer us, that we can work together to stop this. Yes, sir, and I'm just trying to bring everyone together on that because I sense some disturbance, misunderstanding.
I'm proposing that whatever group this is and whoever it's headed by, invest in discussions with the tribes,
Yes.
with the Attorney General's office,
Can you give us references?
with their legislators, with their congressmen, with all sorts of people. I'm not saying we shouldn't fight this thing, I'm happy to help fight it.
Alright.
But as the attorney, I can't tell the county that they can do that. Okay? I'm happy to join any party.
Okay. Okay, let's work together, let's work together, we don't need any division on this. They say that, they agree, this is lawyers.
We're not, we're not...
Actually, they just told us to do it ourselves. They, they didn't say they're going to work with us, they said you find a way to fight it.
If you're saying that you'd be happy to get an opinion on that, that means that is not settled law, right?
Well...
It is up in the air.
No, it's not up in the air as far as I'm concerned, but if someone wants to contact, I'm, I'm in contact.
Then show me where they can.
Show you where they can?
Show me in the law where they don't have the authority to do it.
Well, I...
Why don't we do it?
Constitutionally, they have no authority over your private property.
That's not true.
Yes, it is. Name, name what they can do to your property. Tell me something they can do to your property.
You're asking the wrong question.
I'm not allowed to...
If you would acknowledge me, I'd raise my hand for thirty minutes.
Talk until they're acknowledging you.
Let's hear, let's hear what you say.
You want to hear what I got? Okay, my question is, Mr. Steadman, we're not discussing private land, we're, we're discussing governing bodies. Do they have the ability as a governing body to put in a moratorium, to pause this, to get the proper information?
And what I'm telling you is, in my opinion, they don't have that authority.
And that's your opinion, that's not illegal.
That's, that's, that's what you're going to get from any lawyer, is their opinion, okay? The Attorney General will issue you an opinion.
So you're guiding them off this based off of opinions?
I, I'm telling them that in my opinion, they don't have the authority to do it. If they want to impose one, just like Hughes County did, or whoever it was, O'Fusky, they, they can pass one, but it's not going to be enforceable.
But, but, so, 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 the other question I have is, you follow one, is, you had a predetermined answer before you even went through this estimate. Why drag everybody in the community in here when you already had a predetermined answer? You didn't let anybody?
Because I still want to hear from everybody.
So what do you want to do with them, Mr. Diggle?
I, I heard their concerns, I have, legally, I'm bound by what our attorney tells us, our legal. I'm not bound, I'm not bound, I'm taking his advice.
Fortunately, Mr. Diggle, you personally should make a motion to approve the moratorium right now. Is that correct?
Any of us could, I'm sure. Listen.
I would like y'all to go on record with a motion, and y'all can vote down as end of people in open court.
If it's unenforceable, it's come out of court.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah.
That's where it meets.
My ass, Tom.
Do it, take it to court, let the court say it's not enforceable, not enforceable.
Let's test it, it's not going to cause you, what are you going to cause them?
And I heard a discussion at the church the other night that y'all talked about, uh, getting together, pulling your money together, and y'all hiring an attorney, you're right in court.
You're not representing us doing that. And I'd love to see that man right there sign that same paper, it says he has no benefit from this one court.
I don't know your name, I haven't had that pleasure. You've called me a liar and a thief.
No, I have not, I have signed a paper, I've never said...
I don't need to sign, I didn't sign anyone. Why not? Because I don't need anybody else's money. About that?
It's not about money, it's about your aggression.
Go back to the house, make the motion. And you'll, you'll get paid for your constituents, Mr. Diggle. Make the motion.
May I ask a question? Do, hey, how's the authority to, uh, to restrict the road use agreement? I mean, I mean, can they make it difficult for these corporations to come in here and build these? They do have that.
That's what I said. That, that's what I said, they have authority over the roads. They can make arrangements on the roadway. They can't, listen to me, they can't stop them from using the roads. They can put restrictions on the use of the roadways. The ways that come on it, the damage that are done, all sorts of things they can do because that's public.
And they set that bar high.
You can make it so expensive they paint it four or five...
They, they can, they can set the bar how they, how they choose, but they can't prevent them from using the roads, okay?
You can make it horrible.
But, but, what, what I'm saying is, I'm trying to differentiate between what the county can do with public property and what they can do with private property.
Right.
That's all I'm saying.
Yeah.
Make the motion.
Thank you.
Okay, well, question please. Or two questions, actually. One of them, is there a lot of these places where they have to go or are going through easements on, that are public easements on private property? You all can make decisions on that. Second of all, is if you all vote for a moratorium today, you're going to give us the time? We didn't even hear about this, how do we have time to fight? This takes more than, more than a couple of days to put together.
Second of all, is if you all vote for a moratorium today, you're gonna give us the time, we've not even heard about this, how do we have time to fight? This takes more than, more than a couple of days to put together. We can't do anything until we have the time to do it, and Mr. Stedham, you can make that motion, create a moratorium, and then while it's fighting in court, we have the time to put our defense together. Because we want this done.
I, I, listen to me, I can't, I can't tell people to violate the law. Okay, if they choose to vote, that's okay, I can't tell someone to violate the law.
What law are they violating?
Yeah, of course.
ADA system, I have a question.
Yes.
Is it possible for the commission to, today, create a planning and zoning commission and then issue a study to see if, if the red. Is she okay?
Are you okay?
Those things still scare me, I'm smoking rather strongly, I'm a little pinched, so every time something goes down, I.
I want to be, I want to be allowed to go vote too till Thursday on that great point.
Never mind, President Trump told me to tell you, remember to vote.
Don't worry. Is it possible, ADA system, I know that you, that y'all feel under attack, and I know that you said you don't want these things here, and I know that. Good, and is it possible today for the commissioners to establish a planning and zoning commission? And then study this issue, rather than issuing a moratorium, it is well within the confines of the abilities of this, this commissioners' court to establish a planning and zoning commission. They can establish a commission or a planning group to look at this issue. Now, planning and zoning can only be done by a vote of the people of the county, that's what they're doing in Craig County, as a matter of fact, okay? And that, again, I'm not against anybody in this room, okay? I'm not, I have as much or more invested than anybody here. I, their money doesn't mean anything to me at all, it's not gonna benefit me, but I have to tell you what I believe the law says. So, if, if, if the county wants to form a committee that they have the authority to form to address this issue, that's great. They can't do it today because it's not on the agenda, because they're required by laws, most of the things are going to discuss on your agendas. At their next meeting or especially call meeting, they can do that, okay? They do have control over the roadways, absolutely. They can assist in that regard, another thing that a lot of you property owners have is if they're gonna come around the corner of your place, these, these angles are ninety-degree angles on, on these roadways, and I don't know if those wind turbine fans been, so they may be asking some of you for permission to come across your property, your private property. So, private, private landowners have the right to tell them. Private owners can deny that right, if you're along the pathway of where one of these things is going, I don't have on the plate, are they huge? Bigger than. My point is this, they can't make a right angle. Understandable. So, they have to cut a corner somewhere on somebody's property, that property owner doesn't have to give them the right to come on their property.
They don't need it, they cut the trees down anyway.
Uh, you mentioned the agenda items, and today, agenda item number seven is discussion and take possible action for, discussion and take possible action for. Since this discussion and take possible action for includes a bunch of these other agenda items that are relative to this, this wind farm, would it be possible then using that agenda item to establish a planning and zoning commission today?
Mr. Stedham, ever quote, Mr. Stedham, would you take a question?
Yes.
On the motion, back to the motion. He, Mr. Stedham, right on the planning commission, that's gonna take a while and that has to go to the vote of the people. The most immediate thing that can be done is you gentlemen have the ability to vote for a moratorium that gives people time, you time to establish these planning commissions, we all know it, you know it in your handbook, you can look at the state statutes that are right along the footnote in your handbook and what was required, I'm just simply asking you make a motion and put everybody on record that they are denying this moratorium.
That's a good one. Well, first of all, they, is they do need to call a vote, and they need to vote if this decision, that's what they're gonna do. I want to be very clear, I don't tell these commissioners what to do, I advise them what I believe the law is. And I can't advise anybody that I represent to violate what I believe the law to be. If they choose to do so, I can't prosecute them for that, if someone said that. But my point is, is I just, I don't think anybody in this room is on opposite sides.
Right.
I think that we, I think we need to spend more time trying to figure out how to fight these folks than we're trying to fight each other. And again, I, I don't think it's been bitten, been bitten the wheel, I haven't talked to Craig County, but I think it'd be very important to talk to Craig County and some of these counties that are going through this fight right now. They've gone through this, they've, they've dealt with the issue of trying to have a moratorium, they finally got down to the point which is correct, that the only way that the county can regulate this is by zoning, and they're putting zoning to a vote. That's good, Mr. Stedham, I'm glad you mentioned that, because agenda item number eleven is new business, and in parentheses, it says any matter not known about or that could not have been reasonably foreseen prior to posting the agenda. I didn't know it was possible for the posting of the agenda for this commissioners' court to be able to establish a planning and zoning commission in this meeting, but now you know. I don't have any problem with them appointing one, e- even today, I don't fear, that, that's, that's not, that's not a law that they're breaking that I can recommend that they should not do. Thank you, ADA system, we're calling you commissioners right now to make a motion and approve a planning and zoning commission under agenda number eleven, agenda item number eleven, new business. Okay, will I be here till agenda item number eleven then? And, and, and that, all of that's great, they have to decide who they're going to, I, I don't, I don't have any control over that, they can decide who it is. Thank you very much, Stedham, I know that we're all trying to work within the confines of the law, unfortunately, the law allows us, under agenda item number eleven, to today, establish a planning and zoning commission to study this, this wind project, thank you all. Not, not physically, I'm used to that, I've been doing this over forty years, I, you know, I carry a gun for a reason. I, and what I want, what I want everybody to understand is, is I'm not against anybody here, and I don't think these guys are. What I'm saying is, is there are limits to what their powers are, and we have to go to the people that have the powers. Again, I'm talking about the tribes, their representatives, the tribes that may be here today, the Creeks and the Cherokees, you know, five miles of McIntosh County is in Cherokee Nation, they have a say in this matter, contacting the governor's office, contacting the DEQ and the Water Resources Board, because they have way more power than we do.
I believe there's a representative here.
Well, I, I'm tribal too, I don't represent the tribe, but I'm Creek citizen as well.
I'm here representing the Creeks Nation.
Very good, listening.
I'm here representing the community.
I'm not sure you answered.
Okay, I talked to our chairman, I am a board of directors of the Creeking Indian Community, and I know a lot of you are Cree, Creeptown, Creekan, Creekans, Creeks, whatever. And I don't care wherever you live, I live, I used to live up west, we still have property, family still has property out west for centuries. And to not know about what else is going on, I don't know, I've just, I've just read in the local paper, I get it every week the last two weeks, and I still, I'm just now learning, just like a lot of these people, I didn't know, and so, anyway, I am here to represent the community, and I did talk to our chairman who is Pamela Turner Hunt from Fayetteville, Oklahoma, and we are having a board meeting tonight at six PM, and if you can come, and it don't matter who you are, if you're a member of the Creeking Indian Community here in town, or out there in the country, anybody, if you have any concerns, you need to be, you will be heard, and it's concerning the Windher bodies, and the board is being picked today, and a sign's gonna be put out at the elderly nutrition, Creekin Nation Elderly Nutrition over here where the old skating rink used to be, and you can voice your opinions tonight, and I did talk with Clifford McElhaney before he came in the door, and I knew I wasn't gonna be able to get inside, but I did voice some, some concerns I had, and I asked him to be at our meeting tonight to be a speaker at our board meeting, now, we have, we have issues, we have, we have things we need to take care of for our community, and we are involved with this Creeking Indian Community. A lot of you don't know that, but they ask us for our support, and we do, we want to give that support for our community if we can, whether it be given hardship, money, we want to help our community, and we have been there in the last year or two or a few years, but now, we are above water, and we do have a Christian board, I do want to say that, and we're not there to see what we can get out of it, but what our community, what our citizens, what our members, we're representing them.
Can you tell them one more time where the flyer is?
It's gonna be posted at the, at the door, at the door where the old skating rink used to be. Over there where the casino is being built, just south, just south, that's where our meeting is tonight, and I said, I.
What time is your meeting?
It's gonna be at six o'clock tonight at Creeking Indian Community Center, and I have Clifford McElhaney to come, he said he would be there, A.J. Jones, who's a concern, concern citizen, and he is a former councilman, national councilman for the Creekin Nation, and he's also an EIC board member, as well as Clifford McElhaney, and Roger Barton, he is an EIC board member, and we have, we have gone to Roger because of concern that Creeking Indian is having surveys and whatever, so, we're gonna contact him also and see if he will be there tonight.
Okay, I need to hear from this gentleman.
Okay, and.
We've been giving everybody that information.
Oh, okay.
We've been here, yeah, we appreciate the information, I just wanted to hear.
Whoever, we encourage you to be here.
Post it on Facebook, when you're paid, I'll share.
Okay, I'll start sharing.
And sorry, you're with Creekin Nation.
Yeah, my name is J.A., I'm a, I work for the Office of Environmental Services for the Skogee Creekin Nation, so I just want to respond, when the tribe is represented here, I was told to, to listen to what, the facts of what was presented, and I'll be reporting that back to my boss, Director James Williams, and I will go up to sharing to our Secretary of Interior through the chief's office.
Okay, we appreciate that.
So, if you want, if you're gonna make the motion to vote, can you also follow that up with the board, can you, instead of making that motion, make a motion, call a special meeting at the end of this week to allow people more time to get things together, you can make that motion and, and table this and call a special meeting. I think the people would appreciate that.
We need a nighttime meeting, there's so many people that say, I can't go, I can't go, I can't go.
The, the reason we're in such a hurry is because we seen the sixty days intent to build, and that is up for the ninth.
That's why we, if you give us more time, that would give us, if it, if it give us a month, three months or, or a year,
it would give us time to organize and, 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 we can't let them just run overs.
Can we not have a moratorium on the roads, I know you said it's about private property, but the, the roads are what you said you had control over.
Right.
So, can you not make a motion to, can you not do a moratorium on the roads to prevent this from happening today?
I've discussed with the gentleman that said he's with the, we haven't, all we've heard was, we may be coming in, that's all we've heard from windmill companies. But, I hear people saying, we've had.
They're coming in.
Yeah, but we've heard people say, I've heard from four different companies saying they're coming in, and I, until y'all did it, I wasn't sure of nothing, you know? So, this is all new, I just want to say that, but, but the roadways, the gentleman I talked to with the Canadian, or the, yeah, Canada, he said he was with them, and I told him, I said, we definitely need to hear from you before you set foot, and he said, absolutely, we gotta discuss what y'all expect on roadways now, and we're getting that information now, I've got a, I've got a file starting for y'all, I'm trying to get the roadways took care of, and we will be on that, but, anyway, so, I just.
Also, they have to make them show you written proof that they have gotten roadway permits when they.
Yes, ma'am, they will.
Get into, if you make sure that it's in writing, because they'll try to penetrate people's land and say, oh, I'm sorry.
And like Mr. Stedham said, if they try to make a corner across your land, y'all can stop it.
We can stop them, you don't sign it, kind of right away, you're agreeing with them.
Yes, county roads, I want to make sure your bridges are safe, uh, they're gonna upgrade them whatever it takes, we'll make sure that, that. You don't want, I want your rich body.
Not for them, not for them.
I'm saying. But, this gentleman, yes.
I, I have a question for you, ADA system, all due respect, yes, I, I, I respect what you're saying, if I'm understanding correctly, you're saying you got a ten hundred and forty moratorium because it's not private property, because you guys can't have jurisdiction over public property, is that, is that correct?
As a general statement, yes, that's correct.
So, if my, my private property, I'm burning tires in the smoke that's going into the city park next door, I'm not allowed to do that, am I?
Because there's a law against burning tires, there's not a law against having windmills.
If I had something that was affected by my needs, the public's carrying around, my private property, that would affect, that would be jurisdictional.
Not if it is like what is considered to be a, a private or public nuisance, that's a landowner's job to deal with themselves. If it is a violation of the law, burning tires is against the law.
I was just.
I, I understand, but my, my point is, nope, not, not just the county, the state of Oklahoma doesn't have jurisdiction over your private property, except as the legislature has passed restrictions on it.
So, what I do is that's a public property, you're saying that they don't have jurisdiction.
I'm saying that the Board of County Commissioners doesn't have any jurisdiction over it, others may.
I didn't know if you said a fire, you're a burn man, we have.
Absolutely, because all by the state law, they have that jurisdiction, there, there's nothing, I guess if you wanted to go to the state legislature and say, we want you all to pass laws that give the counties authority over windmills, and the legislature passed that, then we wouldn't have any problem at all, we'd be getting them. But they only get the power that's given to them by the state of Oklahoma.
I understand, I'm just saying, it's not just the sand, the wind, the wind itself, the effect, or how.
Sure, just, just, just like, just like chicken barns do, and that's why there are agencies that address those things, okay? But it's not, it's not the county, it's the Department of Environmental Quality, it's Oklahoma Water Resources Board, it's Environmental Protection Agency that protects those things. Counties don't have that authority.
What can you guys do, and we're going, we are more than there for you guys, what can you do today to delay the, give us some time, because there's many things that we've just got about.
I, I have a question.
I, I, I understand, I understand.
Now, I do know, Tony Hayes, he led, him and Jeremy, they've got a construction company, five years ago, they got in trouble because they did not have a building permit. Anytime you build a, or pour pad in McIntosh County, you have to get a building permit, am I correct? That is something y'all can struggle, you can put a million dollar bond on that building permit and slow them down. It's anywhere.
In my backyard.
We've been there.
Yes, if, if it is, because there's law, allowed by law for them to issue such permits, and they can issue those permits, they have to be applied equally to all citizens though, they can't make it harder for you to get a permit than they do somebody else's.
But to deal with that floodlight permit, am I correct on it, it was not a state law pass, it was just a way for you guys to get insurance money for flood insurance. Am I correct by saying that?
I'm sorry.
You remember, it was in your time, remember your first office on the Creekin, we, what we did on that, we found out.
Can you lean into the microphone?
What, what we found out on that, I, I, uh, uh, talked to the other commissioners and stuff, to vote to only put floodlight permits to be issued in certain areas. At one point in time, the county was requiring a floodlight permit to receive an address, and then since changed to where, if you're in certain categories of the county, certain areas, that's the only ones that have to have floodlight permits now.
But now, we, at one time though, everybody in the county that was building, no matter if you were on a high peak or in a low plain area, you still had to.
At one point, and then, and then I raised a resolution to change that.
Right, I understand that, so, but you're saying that there is no way, since there's already been precedents, maybe for establishing a permit, am I correct by saying that, there's already been precedents, having, having to require a permit?
I just said there's no way they can't establish a per, I'm sorry, I, I didn't say there's no way they can't establish a permit, they can establish a, a permit within the county, a building permit, if you want to call it that, what I'm saying though is it has to be applied equally among everyone who applies for.
Okay, can it not be put in there, appreciate that, can it not be put in there where the renewable energies, corporations come into our county and put them up, can you not require a million dollar per permit for renewable energies, and then take half the money and use it for county uses, per permit, the other half, put it up into an escrow account for a decommission fund? Because it's not a matter of when they will decommission them, or, it is a matter of when, it's just, they're winding up decommissioning these things over time, in time, but they will wind up decommissioning these things, they will break, we all know that, they've got mechanical parts on them. So, if that is my suggestion, and since there's already been precedents for a permit, that would be a way to be able to slow them down, and also the county will be able to receive money that way, and otherwise, that you're gonna be already tied up in litigation, trying to get tax money, a lot of the first five years of building these towers, you guys aren't gonna receive any money for it, because it's all government grant money, it's already been proven that you guys have.
Oh, I know, I don't think it's anything good about this.
Oh, I, I'm not, I'm not saying that, I'm saying a way to be able to slow them down, and also, if we are going to do it, that way we can get some tax money out of it, the county will be guaranteed some tax money, be able to help fund the county, we already don't have enough tax money the way it is.
So, I, I agree with that.
And it's tough, these guys know every day on these roads out here, the roads are horrible in our county, they're horrible, you know that.
I do, I, I'm just like you guys, you know, now, as to the permit idea, there, there, there's nothing that prevents them from establishing a permit that is directed in non-public utility businesses like this, because this, again, it gets into such a narrow area, they're not a public utility, they're a private company, so the Oklahoma Corporation Commission doesn't regulate them like they do public utilities. Um, it's, I hate to say it's an area that's falling through the holes, because we're far from the first county or state where I had to deal with these things, but we've all had to deal with them the same way, and, and what I'm trying to tell you is, I'm, I'm on the same side as all of you all, but the places that, that are gonna be most effective in helping you are not gonna be on the county level, they're gonna be on higher levels, federal agencies, tribal agencies, state agencies. I don't mind doing what we can on this level, the idea of a permit on them, okay, it's something that needs to be considered.
Okay, let me ask you this, you remember, what was it, two, three years ago, whenever the marijuana was passing in the state, there was zero regulations on it? You remember all the land being sold around here, you remember everything?
I campaigned against it, and I meant no problem with it, but that's a different matter.
Well, I'm just saying, you know, there were zero regulations, now we finally got a few regulations, because we just gotta figure out something at the county, these three gentlemen here have the best opportunity, they have the best opportunity to do something for our county, you know. Well, I understand that, but, you know, mine could be out here in quite another couple of months, maybe this afternoon. You guys, you guys really remember who, who the county is, it is, it is, it is your constituents, it is your families, so you guys just keep that in mind, who you guys, who you guys work for, you gotta benefit yourself, no, you guys need to benefit the county, and everyone that's been here. I understand.
It ain't your money, let me tell you.
Well, I understand, just, just don't, who you guys are working for, but you're in the office, and, you know, we both you guys have opposites, and, you know, that's just as simple as that, right there, all right, appreciate you guys tonight.
Uh, I'm gonna ask the request, uh, sort break, because I've been drinking coffee. Okay, yes, sir.
So, as most of you know, I'm your elected state representative for House District Fifteen, and I stand here today, I appreciate all the public comments, I appreciate the county commissioners, I appreciate the ADA system, but as trans alt stands in our county, in our district, to take our rights and to take our freedoms away, I can pledge it with our three state representatives that are here today, Mr. Shaw, Mr. Hayes, and our Senator Hamilton, that you have four people in this room that have enough eyes to keep your God given rights back to you, and we will work with this commission, we'll work with the DA system, and we will work to make sure that this problem is solved, because I am a lifetime citizen of this district, and I was born and raised in McIntosh County, so it affects me just like it does y'all, so you have our word and our pledge, we will work, work with these folks to help any way we can protect your guys' rights as property owners, thank you.
Isn't true that they have received federal funding?
I have no idea.
Okay, because there was a whole lot of subsidies when they started in twenty twenty-two, if they have received even one dollar of federal funding, they are required to comply with NEPA, and I'm sure you're.